Off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Let's start with roll call.
Okay, and this is roll call for the City Commission meeting of Monday, August 24th. Benson.
Benson here.
Benson is present. Brunick.
Brunick here.
Brunick is present. Sarda.
Sarda here.
Sarda is present. Mibom.
Mibom here.
Mibom is present. Minor.
Minor present.
Minor is present. Moser.
Moser here.
Moser is present. Shram.
Shram here.
Shram is present. Weber.
Weber is present.
Weber is present. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson present.
Mayor Johnson is present. City Manager Leon.
Leon is here.
City Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Denherter.
Denherter is here.
City Attorney Denherter is present.
You have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of August 10th, 2020, as well as the budget workshop meeting of August 10th. What is your pleasure?
Shram so moved.
Moser second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion about the minutes? Roll call.
And this is roll call for the minutes of August 10th and the budget workshop also of August 10th. Mibom.
Mibom aye.
Mibom is aye. Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Minutes past nine zero.
City Managers report.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission, thank you. Just a couple of things this evening. First of all, I have not received any comments on the city budget as of yet from the public. You are setting your public hearing this evening, so the September 14th meeting will be the second reading. So you have, you and the, of course, and the public can contact us about any comments you have regarding the 2021 budget. You can also participate with those comments in the meeting as well, but just an invitation for anyone who may have comments to visit with us prior to that date. Also, some of you were aware that there was discussion of a ad hoc, I guess, Riverboat Days party that was to take place this weekend. Our police department didn't have any such party, so must have been the heat and humidity that drove people away, so that did not occur. But our officers were on standby, even though they were not all working, that many of them were on standby in case needed to be. So that weekend went smoothly. As you are aware, this is a Yankton School District building, and in keeping with their policy for face coverings, we are requiring those in this building. Prior to that, I indicated that, you know, was something optional but strongly recommended, but we want to make sure we're supporting the Yankton School District, what they're doing, and this is a school building, and that is their policy. So appreciate everyone from the public and all of us. I know some folks don't find them comfortable, but for everyone's safety and to keep with their policy. I also want to visit with you all a little bit about work session items. I know there's been a couple of items that have come up. I did cancel tonight's work session for no better reason other than I haven't had time to produce anything to have a work session on. We as staff have a couple of items that we should be bringing forward to you all, but they're your work sessions. So if you do have some items that you'd like to bring forward and schedule, we can do that this evening. I just want to make sure everyone's aware that I'll need some help prioritizing our work. We're just, we've got a lot on our plate right now, and I think a lot coming forward with some of the things that we'd like to bring to you as well. So one of you mentioned public utilities and researching and better understanding the home rule for former government, and I just wanted to ask the group if there was anything that you absolutely needed scheduling. We will certainly do that.
City Manager Leon, Commissioner Moser, I appreciate and think a lot about new ideas. I think it's great for our city to think about those things, but I guess I would caution you to really work with your department heads and figure out what our immediate needs are. We haven't been able to hire, you know, a lot of our part-time staff. Full-time staff have been switched to other duties to try to cover what we're short on. I don't know how many people know that we do get prisoners that do work release and work for us during the year, and missing all of that and then trying to stretch city staff into a lot of new ideas worries me a little bit. So I guess my thought, and would let others speak, but I think we have enough on our plate between flooding, a pandemic, new aquatic center opening, that I think it would be wise for city staff to spend their time on some of those really big ideas and then what you feel you and your department heads need to share with us at this point, and maybe look at in the future, distant or so, thinking about those new ideas once we've stabilized and really seen where taxes and budget and everything settles. That's my thoughts.
Okay, I'm not hearing anything else, I don't think, or seeing any other.
I would just add, you know, when it comes to the subject of public utilities, you know, that might be a conversation that's better suited for our strategic planning session to see if there's commission interest in that subject rather than elevating it right away to a study or a work session. So I do agree, we have a lot on our plates right now, and staff I know are going full throttle, and I think we need to respect that and keep focused on the things that are priority right now. And I still feel we're in emergency management mode, and we need to focus on the vital organs. Anyone else have thoughts?
Thank you. Yes, the other item, I appreciate those comments. The other item that we're managing is, you know, health of our employees, and right now that's good, and so we're happy about that, although, you know, we have some people for planned illness that are out, but, you know, we've had healthy employees thus far, and just not knowing what that brings, I want to make sure we can provide the essential services as well. So that might look different going forward here. So I don't have anything else for the commission. I'll stand for questions or let you move forward with your work.
Any questions for the City Manager? If not, we'll go on to public appearances, and we're going to start off with the recognition of one of our officers, Dylan Wilson, so I will turn it over to Chief Harris to start the recognition process.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, thank you for having us this evening. One of the things we like to do is recognize our officers for the positive things that occur in our community. And on March 3rd of this year, we had, we responded to a home invasion with shots fired, and we had two of our officers that were right there, very close as it was happening, and they responded to an apartment in the basement, and they didn't know what kind of scene they were walking into. But one of our officers, in the middle of all of that volatility, saw an injured wounded individual that was bleeding profusely. Dylan Wilson looked around, made sure the scene was safe enough, and then actually provided medical attention until we could get medical attention to him by applying a tourniquet to the injured subject's arm. Didn't have any idea who he was, whether he's a suspect or a victim, but didn't make any difference to us or our officers. They took care of the immediate need. And one of the things that was interesting is when that subject was treated at a Vera Sacred Heart Hospital emergency room, the doctor said there to one of our other officers who was present, "Had that tourniquet not been provided, that individual would have died." He was bleeding that profusely. We had a officer that actually saved a person's life that evening in the middle of a very volatile and interesting crime scene. He was presented a life savings award. Dylan, can you come up on the screen? He's supposed to be there on the screen, but.
All right. Turn off the monitor screen.
Yeah. Dylan Wilson is one of our younger officers, but he has a life-saving award there that was presented to us by Vera Sacred Heart, and we truly appreciate it. But I wanted you guys to be aware of the caliber of officers we have. In addition, just to Dylan being able to provide that, I want to give the whole department kudos. We have a very good training program that some of our officers have put together on life-saving emergencies, and Dylan just provided the training and the, actually administered the training that he was given. So we have a whole good program there at the department that the officers put together themselves, and it did save a life in this case. So kudos to you and the rest of the department. Dylan, thank you. Any questions for myself or Dylan? I told Dylan he had to give a five-minute speech, and he was about to die.
Well, we just appreciate you, Chief, for bringing this to our attention, and appreciate Officer Wilson's efforts to save a life in a situation where he did not know what he was walking into, did not know for sure what dangers may still be there. He was focused on a person's life, and that's, that's what our officers should be doing, and we can be very proud that that is the priority in a situation like that.
Yeah, one of the other things I just forgot to mention, though, his partner Jericho, Jericho was there as well. He, he actually, Jericho Osborne provided assistance and made sure that Dylan was safe while he was doing that. So while he didn't administer the tourniquet, he was there and present in making sure that it was a safe scene so that we could actually take care of the victim. So while he wasn't the person with hands-on, he provided assistance to our officer as well. So we give him kudos as well.
Chief, I would like to point out, isn't Dylan our new SRO? And so I'd like to hear how his first day went.
So Dylan, how did your first day go at SRO?
First day went really well. Kids were running around, not knowing where to go, and I really couldn't help them because I didn't warn them for them to go either. Really good first day, and, you know, excited to see all the kids and meet teachers and just getting out there. And I'll hit all the elementaries this week, so meet everybody.
Thanks, Dylan. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I think we owe our thanks to Dylan for not only teaching kids, but teaching other officers how to, I don't know if it's called stop the bleed or what you call the program at the station, but that's also great that he's passing that along. So yes, let's talk. Thank you. All right, and now is the time for public appearances, so if there's anyone in the audience or on YouTube who would like to bring a subject to the commission's attention that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to do it. We have no one walking to the podium in the commission chambers. Dave, is there anyone on YouTube who wants to address an issue not on tonight's agenda? Is Dave there?
He should be. Just hang on one second here. Well, perhaps we can revisit public appearances if you want to continue.
We'll move on then to the consent item agenda, and number one is a possible quorum event on September 12th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. in front of the Yankton County Courthouse for a bridge dedication ceremony. There will be no official commission action. I don't know that we need a vote on that. So let's move on to old business. Number one is Consideration Memorandum 20-156 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale malt beverage license and special retail on-sale wine dealer's license for September 12th, 2020 from Ag United for South Dakota, and this event would be at the National Field Archery Association at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
Sarda moves the memorandum.
Minor seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Do we have Dave with us? Is there anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission?
I'm still waiting for a response here, Mayor, so.
Okay. Al, roll call, please.
This is Commissioner Mibom. I'm just going to let you know, so Dave Mingo is showing his video, having some audio issues. I am following the YouTube livestream, and there are no comments on YouTube for this particular item.
Thank you, Commissioner Mibom. That helps. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on new business item 3-1. Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mibom.
Mibom aye.
Mibom is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 3-1 passes nine zero.
Number two under old business is Consideration Memorandum 20-153 regarding the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 1037, which is a parking ordinance within the city of Yankton. What is your pleasure?
Moser moves the memorandum.
Brunick seconds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ross, can you again remind the public what this ordinance would do?
Sure. In essence, this ordinance accomplishes two things. One, it shifts the procedure that is used for enforcing parking tickets from the criminal procedure as a misdemeanor, a simple misdemeanor, to a small claims collection procedure similar to the way the city collects unpaid water bills. The reason for this is at the request of the court, the small claims procedure provides a method to serve the paperwork or start the procedure on an individual by certified mail, as opposed to making sure the individual has personally received the paperwork. The court no longer felt comfortable enforcing parking tickets with warrants when people did not show up for court or pay their fine, because there's no way to be certain that the individual actually received their ticket. It may have blown off a vehicle, for instance. So the small claims procedure is already accepted by the courts as an alternative method to enforce a civil fine, and as a result, the court asked us to shift to that procedure. That's also the procedure that the city of Sioux City uses to enforce their speeding camera violations. That is, that passes constitutional muster, so that's the reason for the change. We also use the opportunity to add a little meat to this ordinance so that we have a procedure built into the code that matches what we're already doing, which is a fine escalation if the, the fine isn't paid within a period of time. And it also sets forth the circumstances when a registered owner is not driving the vehicle, and what circumstances they're not responsible for the fine. It's essentially cleanup and a change of process.
Is there any commission discussion?
Ross, this is Commissioner Mibom. What are the costs associated with the city filing in small claims? Is it going to be more expensive to do this route, or is it free to us because we're a municipality and we're good friends with the county?
The unified judicial system will be waiving the filing fees. The only cost we can't avoid is the certified mail service charges. So we will have some postage associated with each one that we have to file. We would only actually be filing the ones where the individuals did not pay their ticket within the timeframe before the fine escalates. So there'd be some budgeted expense that we have associated with it.
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Do we have Dave with us yet? Dave, is there anyone on YouTube? Dave, I'm not sure what's going on with your audio, but you sound like a cartoon.
Again, this is Commissioner Mibom. I can tell you that at this point, there are still no comments on YouTube, and we're about 20 seconds in, so no comments on this particular item from the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Mibom. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, this is roll call on old business 3-2. Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mibom.
Mibom is aye.
Mibom is aye. Minor.
Minor is aye, and I would like to send, I don't know, someone, Adam, to investigate. It sounds like we have a helium leak wherever Dave Mingo is.
Minor is aye, and we'll get an officer sent to make sure that Dave's okay. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old business item 3-2 passes nine zero.
All right, we're now into new business. Number one is Consideration Memorandum 20-159 regarding Resolution 20-57, which is an extraterritorial jurisdiction conditional use permit for additional height on a tower located at 2,000 South Dakota Highway 314. Powder River Development Services is the applicant. What is your pleasure?
Sarda moves to approve.
Minor, minor second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? I don't know if Dave can join us, but.
Dave may not be able to join us, and I do have some information to share on this item for the commission, and I can probably handle questions that you may have on some of his other items. He's given me some update already, so it's a good thing we always do back up. We did receive one email notification from an individual in favor of this request, and it's recommended by the planning commission as well, as you know. So this individual didn't want to come to the meeting and was just saying they would like you to consider this favorably.
So this would add 20 feet to an existing tower. There are opportunities for co-location, which is something that our planning commission always encourages. Do I have all that correct, Amy?
That's correct.
All right. Any more commission discussion? Anyone in the audience want to address the commission on this item? Is there anyone on YouTube, Dave or Commissioner Mibom?
There are no comments on YouTube for this particular item.
All right, thank you. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on new business item 4-1. Shram.
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mibom.
Mibom is aye.
Mibom is aye. Minor.
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-1 passes nine zero.
Number two under new business is Consideration Memorandum 20-160 regarding Resolution 20-58, an amendment to an adjacent conditional use permit for a self-storage facility at 310 Piper Street. WDM Properties LLC is the applicant. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves the memorandum. Minor seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Commissioner Mibom, are there any comments on YouTube?
At this time, there are no comments on YouTube for this particular item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on new business item 4-2. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mibom.
Mibom is aye.
Mibom is aye. Minor.
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-2 passes nine zero.
Number three under new business is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1039, which establishes September 14th, 2020 as a date for a public hearing to consider a rezoning from R2 single-family residential to B2 highway business at 3,007 West City Limits Road. JTG Properties LLC is the owner. Can we get an introduction?
Introduced. Moser.
Is there any commission discussion on this item before we move on? All right. Number four under new business is Consideration Memorandum 20-162 regarding Resolution 20-59, a plat of the south side of the 1600 block of West 25th Street. Kelly Nielsen is the president and owner of this LLC. What is your pleasure?
Benson so moved.
Shram second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Commissioner Mibom, anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission?
There are no comments on YouTube for this particular item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call for new business item 4-4. Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mibom.
Mibom is aye.
Mibom is aye. Minor.
Minor's aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-4 passes nine zero.
Number five under new business is Consideration Memorandum 20-158 and Resolution 20-56, recommending approval of the bid award for a skid steer loader for the Public Works Department. The low bid is $39,279 from Mark's Machinery. What is your pleasure?
Benson so moved.
Moser second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item?
I have a question. I'm not sure if Corey or Adam would be best answer. Just curious. In this situation, we are actually trading in the previous vehicle. Is that typical or unusual? I just seem to more often than not see that we. I just seem to more often than not see that we instead put these up for public auction, for instance. So just curious why it's maybe different in this situation.
Commonly, we don't trade them in just because it's another step in the process. But with this one, we felt the $10,000 credit was a good value for the existing skid loader that we'd be trading in. So that's why we went that route.
Understood. Thank you. Adam?
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Commissioner Maybaum, anyone on YouTube who wants to address the commission?
At this time, there are no additional public comments on this item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on New Business Item 4-5. Brunig?
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Maybaum?
Maybaum, aye.
Maybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schram?
Schram, aye.
Schram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-5 passes 9-0.
Number six under new business is Consideration of Memorandum 20-121 regarding acceptance of the utility and street improvements for West Street in the Dakota West Estates 2 addition. What is your pleasure?
Brunig moves the memorandum.
Start a second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Commissioner Maybaum, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
At this time, I see no additional public comments on this agenda item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on New Business Item 4-6. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Maybaum?
Maybaum is aye.
Maybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schram?
Schram, aye.
Schram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig?
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-6 passes 9-0.
Number seven under new business is Consideration of Memorandum 20-157 in support of Resolution 20-55, setting the 2020 Yankton Road tax rate at 50 cents per foot, which is no change from the previous year. What is your pleasure?
Minor moves the memorandum.
Start a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? And Commissioner Maybaum, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
There are no public comments on YouTube for this agenda item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on New Business Item 4-7. Maybaum?
Maybaum, aye.
Maybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schram?
Schram, aye.
Schram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig?
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-7 passes 9-0.
Number eight under new business is Consideration of Memorandum 20-163 regarding Resolution 19-60 regarding a no-parking resolution at 300 East Sixth Street. So this would extend from Sixth and Pine to the Prairie Homes Assisted Living driveway on the north side of Sixth Street. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Commissioner Maybaum, anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission?
There are no comments from the public on YouTube for this agenda item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on New Business Item 4-8. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schram?
Schram, aye.
Schram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig?
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Maybaum?
Maybaum, aye.
Maybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-8 passes 9-0.
Number nine under new business is the introduction and first reading to establish September 14, 2020, as the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance Number 1038, which is the 2021 city budget. Can we get an introduction?
Minor introduces.
Thank you. City manager, is there anything you would like to add on that before we move on?
No, nothing I'd like to add. I do know, you know, we will be looking for you guys to help us establish a supplement for the 2020 budget sometime this fall. I don't know when that will be exactly. 2021, we just welcome comments from the public, comments from you, concerns, issues that we should talk about. Very little feedback, with exception from a man there in the back. I did get some feedback from him prior, but he's always prompt. So if there's other public comment, certainly, we want to hear it.
Thank you. Any commission discussion before we move on? Okay. Number 10 under new business is Consideration of Memorandum 20-165 regarding a time management human resources software agreement proposal. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Mosher.
Start a second.
We have a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, can you describe for the public what we're considering here?
Yes, I sure can. And Dwayne Johnson is here if you have technical questions. And Cory Pashpashol is on GoTo if you'd like to talk with him a little bit as well. Some of you who have been on the commission know that we've been looking for a solution to manage time and attendance for some time. We tried one some years ago, and it just didn't serve what we thought, how we thought it would. And we've talked about getting off of paper and getting on to time management and attendance system for some time. That became even a higher priority after the COVID-19 pandemic, looking for ways where we can be more efficient, where we can produce payroll if, you know, key employees that work on payroll are not available, looking for a solution where we have minimal touching and passing around of things throughout our organization. So that sped this up. With the onset of the CARES Act, we certainly wanted to take a look again to see if that's something that could be reimbursed. We had not budgeted it this year. However, thought that perhaps we'd be able to identify a solution and talk about that in the budgeting process. So I've asked a team of people to get together and fast-track this project. We had two people, three people from our IT department and folks from finance, Cory from HR, of course, and then we pulled in one of the department heads who, whose employees don't necessarily all have access to technology in the same regard that some of us that work in the office setting do. We looked at several different vendors, namely Cronos Workforce Ready, Paycom, Banco, and NeoGov. The recommendation, after a lot of study and discussion, was with Cronos Workforce Ready, and that's a proposal before you tonight for a couple reasons. One, Cronos has a very proven track record with local governments and local government software. And our software and financial system, while it is mature, it works for us now, and we're not, we're looking at what we're going to do for the future. Cronos is able to make that transition easily with us if we need to do that. So you can see that there is a one-time setup fee, and then there is a monthly cost per employee. And, you know, our per-employee cost varies from month to month, especially in the summer months. We have a large uptick in the number of employees we have in a typical summer. We also have some expenses there for things like bar-coded clocks as well. So some of our employees, as I mentioned, for example, are solid waste recycling. They may not have access to their own technology, or they may not have access to city technology in the line of their work. So we want to give them the ability to punch in, punch out, you know, evaluate their time, et cetera. There's an equipment maintenance charge and some other monthly, or excuse me, some other costs associated with some of the other features that you can read there, and we can talk more about if you're interested in. The estimated annual total will be about a $30,000 expense. We do believe that our upfront costs, if we're able to move forward with this initial solution, may be reimbursable by the CARES Act because of the problems that it solves for us. So really, you know, we started looking at time and attendance only, but we wanted to not just think for today, but also think about when things get back to a little more regular business. Knowing that, what our future workforce is like, we also need to provide a solution where if we should have a change in staff, whether that be in finance or HR, that we can easily onboard employees and provide benefits, logistics, and all those types of things that we're not so easily able to do now. You know, we have institutional knowledge, and that's very valuable. The ability to transfer 30 years of institutional knowledge into a couple months or a month when we get notified of a resignation, it just doesn't work as well. So we lost, this is also an investment for our future and the people that are in our positions in the future as well. The employees hate the paper time cards. If you ask any city employee, they can't believe that we still utilize those time cards. If you ask any of the employees involved in the FEMA recording of time, literally, it was a trek down to the basement and pulling up paper time cards, which we have. We have excellent record-keeping in finance, but to store all those and physically go through those for that type of thing is not the easiest. The other problem that this solution will give us is the ability to take care of our payroll for us. So, you know, not just me entering time, or if I take a vacation day, but also then generating that payroll and talking to our financial system, which is, you know, really important if we have employee absence, but also important for the employee too, to be able to manage, you know, their own time off, scheduling, et cetera. So lots of benefits here. This will take a big effort on the part of our staff, primarily IT and finance and HR, to get this lifted up and forward to the employees. I don't think we will probably have employees using this until probably the, either very tail end of the year or the first quarter of next year. But that's the time it will take to get everything inputted. So with your approval, we'd like to, in fact, tomorrow, get our contract over to Cronos and say, yes, please, and how quickly. So with that, if you have any more questions, either Dwayne or I or Cory is on YouTube can help answer them.
I have a question, having been someone who has suffered a computer software integration fatigue, times two. I'll leave it at that. What time, like, is this a good company that's going to really dig in and supply, sorry, a bit of support for this? Are we on our own? I mean, there's all, you know, kind of different models for how you integrate the software, and how involved did this company be?
I think the team felt fairly comfortable that Cronos is large enough of a company that they can provide the support we need. Now, we do very much like the vendor that we have working with us right now, but we know working with software companies enough to know sometimes the guy you get on the phone that sells you the product isn't the guy that you end up with, you know, three months down the line when you have problems and issues. However, I think they felt like this company was robust enough that there would be proper support all the way through. And that was some of the uneasiness that we had with some of the other vendors that the team looked at. Certainly, too, we know other communities that are using Cronos as a solution, and so a lot of our knowledge will probably come from other communities as well. It's like, hey, how are you guys handling this? And we have that good network already in place. So I don't know, Dwayne, if you have additional comments on that?
The only thing that I would add is, this was one of two solutions recommended by our software vendor that handles our financial system. And so one of the key decisions in selecting this company was their ability to integrate with our existing solution and do it successfully previously. So that's an important component, is to make sure that all of those pieces fit together.
This question's for Cory Pashpashol. Has he had experience with this company before?
Are you able to hear me okay? I'm on a headphone with a microphone.
Yes, we can hear you, Cory.
Okay. Cronos, no, I have not worked with Cronos specifically by that name. Cronos did acquire recently another very large apparel software company called Ultimate Software. They have a big UltiPro package. They are merging those together, those two companies. And the Ultimate Software package, I was a part of that implementation program at my previous job, which is another kind of a nice piece with Cronos, is when you combine softwares, those two companies will combine the best of what they both have to come up with an even better product.
I would agree with you, Cory. I use Workforce Ready, and it does look like they are very much going to the UltiPro model. So, um, integration, how long will the integrations team stay by you guys? Is it a 12-week, 16-week?
The timetable we've received from the vendors, four to six months.
Okay.
This would be a question probably for Dwayne. Is, does Cronos software allow for a mobile app for employees to manage their time versus have to come into the office to do that?
Yes, that is included as part of the solution.
It also allows us to geo-fence. So if Al's having a donut, he can't log in and say he's already at work. So we can geo-fence him if we need to do that. And what I think we'll do is, you know, we're of course, talk with the CBA, but each department will be different. Some folks are going to be okay using their own technology. Some people won't want to. Some people have workstations where they can just log in there. You know, we'll develop that as we come along. I think they're just going to be happy that it doesn't take a small act to Congress if you want to, you know, request a vacation day, or, you know, if you work some overtime, and it's, that's just been, you know, a lot of back and forth. It's unnecessary time, and it's unnecessary dollars, taxpayer dollars spent when it's, you know, technology is so prevalent. I think it's also something that is part of our image. You know, when we onboarded Cory, and I'll just tell the story, and, you know, talking with him about how we keep time, I think he, you know, was pretty surprised that we're still operating that way. And we certainly want to be an employer that is utilizing technology when it's, you know, advantageous to the organization, also as something, you know, attractive to employees, which they're used to using in their personal life, and it kind of comes to be an expectation as well. as well. So we want to go away from the Fred Flintstone, you know, whistle where they pull the tail of the bird and get into the modern world here.
Amy, I'm glad to hear we're not chiseling on stone anymore, our time cards. And I agree, I think it's great to go electronic where we can. Out of curiosity, I'm just wondering, how much time would you estimate city staff spend on this paper process that would allow us then to focus on other things?
Well, I couldn't tell you exactly how much time, but I do know, for example, you know, an employee will take, fill out their own time card. This is how it was working prior to COVID-19. We streamlined it a little bit, but prior to COVID-19, employees filled out their time card. We have deadlines by finance too, so that they can process it. It would go to their supervisor. If there was anything wrong, the supervisor may send it back. Supervisor would sign it off on it, get it to finance after the department had signed it. And then finance would look at it if Joan or Jessica would find a problem, would go back to the supervisor, who'd often have to go back to the employee. And in a, in a department like the police department, that might mean waiting till they are coming back in if they had the, you know, if they had a day off all the way through, you know, and it just is very cumbersome. And, you know, it shouldn't be that hard. It just, it just shouldn't be anymore. So the technology will be hard, and it'll be hard for many of us, like me, to get used to doing it those ways when we've used paper, but it's just where we need to be now. And I think too, should we, when we have transition, because we know we will, it sets us up better for successionary planning in the organization. So if we should ever have a new finance officer or a new HR officer or a new city manager, then, you know, it makes it a little more turnkey too, and that's the way the business world is going to be going forward.
One other thing that I would add that kind of fits in with a few of the questions. This will allow us to eliminate another disparate system. Right now, we have what's called employee self-service, which is a contract with another third-party vendor that takes our payroll information, makes it available on the web to employees. This will kind of combine all of those pieces in addition to the payroll functions and the time and attendance, all under one solution. So people won't be going to different areas to do the components that are necessary for their job to manage their time and attendance, and there are other resources like vacation and those types of things as well.
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission? Commissioner Maybaum, anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission?
There are no public comments on YouTube regarding this agenda item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item four dash 10. Minor?
Minor votes aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Maybaum?
Maybaum is aye.
Maybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash 10 passes nine zero.
All right, we're now officially in the 21st century. Number 11 under new business, consideration of memorandum 20 dash 164 in support of resolution 20 dash 61 regarding penalties for parking violations. What is your pleasure?
Sir, the memorandum. Maybaum, second.
We have a motion and a second. Ross, can you describe for the public what we have before us here?
Sure. So this is the follow-up to the ordinance that you guys just passed. That ordinance allows this commission to modify the parking fines for all violations of city ordinance by resolution. That hasn't been done since 2006, and it seemed like that was due for an update, given the changes that we just made. The resolution specifically adjusts the fine so that all of our violations are $25, except for the 24 slash 12-hour violations for vehicles that are parked in a specific period of time for, because of the labor that that imposes on the police department to enforce. That's actually not a change. The only change that was actually made was raising the fine for time limit violations, which was a $10 charge. I don't think we issue many of those tickets, but it's easier for the officers to just have the same fine across the board. The only, we did remove the fine for disabled parking spaces, because those are set by state statute, and our resolution doesn't have any impact on what those fines ought to be. It also specifically identifies who on behalf of the city can sign as party plaintiff on behalf of the city to enforce through the small claims procedure. So that allows anyone from my office or anyone from the police department to be the individual that actually signs that paperwork to get that process started. Does anybody have any questions?
Ross, this is Commissioner Maybaum. So more often than not, this will be coming from the police department, not necessarily your office. Is that right?
I think in the beginning, there will be quite a bit of guidance from my office, but once we get the process streamlined, I think there will be, my efforts will be required if we have to have a trial. But other than that, it will be paperwork handled through the front office of the police
So they're all $25, except for the cases where you're violating a 24-hour upon a public parking or public street or a 12-hour.
In a public parking lot.
Yep.
In a public parking lot.
Then it's $50.
Yes, and that that's a carryover from before. The only fine increase was the time limitation ticket. So if you're parked in a spot that has maybe a 30-minute parking limit, and they catch you being there for an hour, you would have a $25 fine instead of a $10 fine. The significant change is the increase, the escalation is changed from $50 to $100, just to cover the time and hassle associated with the small claims procedure.
Ross, at what point does a vehicle that has received a ticket that is sitting in a public lot, for example, at what point does that vehicle be moved by the city or by police or whoever be towed out of the property?
Under the recent changes you guys made to that ordinance, it's within the authority of the police department to tow at the same time they issue a citation if they wish. That would be an extreme remedy. They're unlikely to do that unless it's a frequent reoccurrence, but they now have discretion to tow immediately or upon future violations.
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Commissioner Maybaum, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
There are no YouTube comments from the public on this particular agenda item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item four dash 11. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Maybaum?
Maybaum is aye.
Maybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash 11 passes nine zero.
There being no other business on tonight's agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Mojer.
Brunick, second.
We have a motion and a second. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on the adjournment of tonight's meeting. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Maybaum?
Maybaum is aye.
Maybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Adjournment, roll call passes nine zero.
This meeting is adjourned. Take care, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your week.